All right, we're gonna go ahead and have a public hearing of some middle of applications to Georgia Department of Community Affairs for a community development block grant of five hundred thousand.
From time to time, the city has opportunity to apply for what's called a community development block grant, and if we can even apply up to five hundred thousand dollars, generally speaking. One of the requirements for applying for that grant is to get citizens' input on what they would like that grant to be used for. So if there's anyone present who would like to speak about what they would recommend that we use a five hundred thousand dollar grant for, please feel free to do so at this time. Mr. Mayor, I don't see any input from the community, but I'd ask that you close the hearing.
Yes, sir, to be closed, thank you. And welcome, everybody, it's good to see everybody out there. Got a lot of folks dressed in blue, that always makes me happy. Especially with the type of guns, and I'm up there, these other four people, and we've only got one way out. You don't wanna see me run up to Julie trying to get away or somebody pull something out there. Julie, I would do that too. But it is good, it's a great day, weather's perfect. We love our country. And the train's coming, so we'll speak quickly. I'm gonna go ahead and call it to order, not ask anybody to pray for us, so I guess that means I've got to pray. It'll be a prayer. You bow your heads, and once we pray, we'll stand and honor this beautiful flag of such a flag of allegiance. Dear Father, we come to you once again, Father, with a heavy heart, that our country is under such turmoil, people attacking us. Father, we know that we're the greatest country that you've ever blessed and continue to bless. Father, we thank you for those blessings and praise you for those blessings. Father, we've got a lot of problems, Father, we ask that you continue to lead us and guide us as we get on our knees, and beg you to do so for this wonderful, beautiful country that we love. Father, be with our soldiers, wherever they may be, especially those that are in harm's way. Father, just protect them as only you can. And Father, we thank their families, their friends, and this country that await their safe return. Be with them as well. Father, be with those that sit, those that have lost loved ones. Father, be with us and guide us in all that we do up here. Father, I believe you have five good people, and I know you've got five people here that love you, and they wanna do what's right. Father, we just thank you that we can still pray, and nobody has to tell us no because we have those prayers. Now, Father, be with us, be with our city, our state, our country. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. You'll stand at face of the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank y'all. Our first order of business is gonna be to swear in and stare it around on the key tip, beautiful bolt. Well, there's a chair right there. Chair, let me get something out of my, 'cause I can't remember this when I put this up. First of all, let us all say, thank you for being willing to be on the board and to serve for our community, and to watch us and you and our community. Now, you want me to raise your right hand until we get closer to the end, I'll just read over this. I do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and heartfully perform the duties as a member of the key to the beautiful board of this city, and that I will support and defend the charter of the city, which is the Constitution and laws of the state of Georgia and the United States of America. I shall attend all meetings of the body to which I have been appointed and the providence intended. I shall abide by the standard and complex of interest adopted by the City Council and the rules and disclosure applicable thereto. Unless disqualified by the standard and complex of interest, I shall actively participate in all decisions of the body to which I have been appointed. I shall attend at city expense any training mandated by the State of Georgia. I shall also attend to schedule any special training arranged by the city attendant. You raise your right hand to affirm what I just read. Thank you very much. Welcome aboard. Next item of business is to, oh, yeah, chief, it's gonna be employee presentations.
The thing we're here is, as you know, we have Employee of the Month program, received several months back. And today is pretty special. This is a, it's a bittersweet moment, and I'll explain that in a minute, but the reason they're here is because back in September the fourth, 6:45 PM, they received a call to a person who had drowned. Officer Clark arrived, the pool was very murky, she cannot see the victim, somebody tells her where he is, she dives in, in uniform and all, boots and all. She goes to the bottom, she finds him, she grabs him, she starts pulling him out. Lieutenant Laska shows up, seconds later, he jumps right into the pool again, full of clothes, vest, gun belt, holding all of them. They're able to get the victim out. EMTs arrive, they resuscitate the kid, and he lived for a few days, but unfortunately, he did wind up dying. But that does change the fact that these two officers, without any thought of their own safety. If you've ever been in a pool dressed with eighteen pounds of stuff on you that does not float, and if you try to pull somebody to the bottom of the water, and I've been there and done that, it is hard. They could have very easily been injured, but that didn't matter, they still dove in, and they're heroes. And because of that, we have honored them with Employee of the Month.
Employee of the Month in recognition for your outstanding work performance for going above and beyond. By Aaron City Council and City Manager recognize Joyce Clark as Employee of the Month from September twenty, September. In recognition of your outstanding work performance in going above and beyond, the Mayor, City Council, and City Manager recognize Steve Laska as Employee of the Month from September twenty, September. Give him a right hand.
I also gonna receive an award on behalf of the Police Department and the City of Tifton for meritorious service.
This is a meritorious service, this is my, I haven't cleaned one of them. Awarded to Joyce Clark, a highly unusual accomplishment under adverse conditions with a degree of hazard to life and lay down to the officer for the performance of their duties. Certified the sixth day of October twenty-fourth. Congratulations. Awarded to Stephen Laska, a highly unusual accomplishment under adverse conditions with a degree of hazard to life and lay down to the officer for the performance of their duties. Certified the sixth day of October.
The last thing I also wanna do is give them a citation or ribbon. We have ribbons, we issue for such awards. Officer Clark? Well, you ready to go in with today? Can't tell you how proud I am of those guys. There are no words.
Well, let me say, half the City Council, we're also very proud. You know, it's not just anybody that would just all of a sudden chuck everything inside, and that's what the chief said, eighteen pounds of heavy stuff that doesn't look, hop into the pool. That's just proud. And that's what we have, we have good people that the chief hires, Larry hires, we're just, we're so proud of it. These awards may mean something on the wall, I know they're nice to have, and I want you to leave it in every person's heart here today, that you did a wonderful, wonderful job. God bless you. Thank you so much. We don't always get to do nice things like that, that is great, it makes you feel good. Now, we have an update from Chief Doughty on the Georgia Highway Safety. Is that the training meeting?
I'm gonna turn this over to Sergeant David Dick.
He was there, and he did a great job. I can tell you that Julie and I were both there. We liked the food, too.
I'd like, first of all, to start by thanking the council for letting us have it, Chief, I appreciate that it's have it. What it is, is the Governor's Office Highway Safety, we have thirteen counties we work in, and we always take people to each county and help each other out in those counties. On September twenty-fifth, we met here and had a great meal, thank the mayor and Ms. Smith for coming. After the meal, we had a three-hour road check, we set one up at Knight Street and Main, Old Miggins Seventy-Five, and Golf and Eighty-Two, I'm sorry, Golf and Armory. During that time, we had sixty-six traffic citations, a couple of drug arrests, two DUI arrests. We served four warrants, one for controlled substance, one for marijuana, got a couple of containers and window tint along with sixty-plus other citations. During that time, we had eighty other officers from surrounding counties coming to assist us, including nineteen of our own. Again, I appreciate the City Council letting us have that every year, it's a once-a-year thing, we appreciate Ms. Smith coming out, helping us, she served food with us, and I appreciate that y'all have given and let us have that.
I appreciate your dad's cooking, I didn't know we could cook that well.
Pretty good, wasn't it?
Sure was.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Thank y'all. We now have a presentation by, says Alan Mooney and Barnes.
I will, Mr. Mayor. At the workshop, we talked about investing some restricted assets that the city has in the solid waste collection disposal fund, our fund. There's five different cost centers in that fund. Part of those restricted assets are for closure, post-closure of the City of Tifton and Tifton County landfill. And in order to receive a better return on investment, those monies rather than having it stuck in a CD for a year at point six-five percent, or is that right?
Three oh.
Or point three oh percent, Lois came up with this idea about, why don't we just, you know, invest those monies similar to what we do with the retirement fund, which as you well know, that Alan Mooney and Barnes has managed that fund for us for numerous years now, and their return on that investment has been phenomenal, to say the least, even during the downturn of two thousand eight and nine, when it kinda went downhill. So we have developed an investment policy for the city, as we told you we would, and I'm gonna turn it over to Richard.
Sure. And let him talk about that. Sir, thank you, Larry, and thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. It might be easier if I just sort of talk through this with you, you can certainly read the actual investment policy. To begin with, in any type of an investment account, one of the very first things that needs to be done is somewhat of an investment policy slash roadmap put together. And this is an agreed-upon strategy that we, the manager, will follow very clearly and carefully in managing those dollars. In this particular situation with the landfills, there are very specific regulations under the Georgia Code that also dictate how this money can and should be invested. And it's very restrictive, as it should be. So just to compare it for just a moment to the City of Tifton Retirement Account, you might remember, in that account, the Georgia Code for a retirement account for municipality allows up to fifty-five percent of the market value of the account to be invested in equities, stocks. The balance can be invested in fixed income instruments of almost any type, corporate bonds, municipal bonds, government bonds, whatever it happens to be, and then cash. But this particular account is somewhat different. The money here can only be invested in government-type bond instruments. No equities can be purchased here. No corporate bonds can be purchased here. A corporate bond is where you're simply loaning your money to a major corporation, and let's just use Ford Motor Company as an example. Theoretically, you could invest your money in a Ford Motor Company bond, and if that company goes out of business, you lose every bit of the money for that particular investment. So therefore, corporate bonds are not allowed for this particular pool of money. So all we'll be using here are government bonds and agency bonds. These bonds, or these instruments, are backed by the full faith and credit of the U.S. federal government. And so therefore, the worst that can happen here is that we buy the bonds, hold them, let interest until they mature, and get your money back. And so, that's what I mean by this is somewhat restrictive. And so, what we are, what we have done, we have taken this Georgia Code, and then we have written an investment policy statement along with Lois Love and Larry and y'all's attorney, and we have spent some time making sure that what we are saying is very, very clear, because this is something that is a fund of money that has to be used for a very long period of time. So what we, what this investment policy and guidelines basically says is that you, the City Council, have the authority to assign to your finance director and city manager the obligation of making sure this money is managed as the Georgia Code and this investment policy statement dictates. And so, what would happen there is, we have this written plan for acquiring, holding, and admitting the investment of assets. And the way this would work, which is a little differently than from the City of Tifton Retirement Account, as we make investments, we actually communicate with your finance director and your city manager, so they have the immediate auditing and understanding of what we're investing, and that is something that comes out of this, of this Georgia Code also. Now, what we'll be doing here is, this is not an account to try to beat the S and P five hundred index or something like that that would be stock or equity-related. What we're doing right here is, we're trying to manage this pool of money, investing in different maturities of the treasury bonds, and different maturities in coupon interest rates of the agency bonds. By doing that, we're trying to generate an average return that would be, I'd like to say significantly higher than you might be getting in just a strictly, a deposit or a CD account. Currently, we feel comfortable that we can maybe generate somewhere in the three to four percent range. And again, this is not something you would say, well, goodness gracious, the Dow Jones is way, way up. Yes, it is, we're not investing in the Dow Jones here, though. And so, we're just simply talking about here, investing these funds in these government bonds and agency bonds. We also are allowed by the, excuse me, by the code, to use some municipal bonds also, which is simply loaning your money to a municipality like the City of Tifton, or the City of New York, or Houston, Texas, or whatever it would happen to be. The majority of this, though, will be in government bonds and agency bonds. Now, also, too, for the liquidity piece, we will normally keep as much as ten percent of the account in cash or cash equivalents. That is just simply that if there is a situation arising, then, and somebody would need to be taken out to pay a bill or do something tied to this pool of money, there would be some cash available there. Keeping in mind also, as these bonds pay interest, the interest goes into the cash component of the account also. So we plan to have our maturities averaging between five and ten years, these are, these instruments are callable. And the most important thing that I would want to emphasize with you, remember that the federal, the U.S. federal government bonds is the most liquid market in the entire world. And so, that just simply means that if for some reason you need some money, we would want to sell the bonds to generate cash, you have got a very liquid market to sell those bonds into, and the money settles the very next day. So this investment policy statement is something that we have, all of us have put together. The idea would be that we would review with your finance director and city manager quarterly, similar to what we do with Carla Cooper, and different ones with the City of Tifton Retirement Account, and then, once a year, we would ask to be able to get on your agenda and to give you an annual update. And mainly, that gives you the opportunity to make sure we follow the investment policy statement. And so, it's just another checks and balances, and that's just simply how, it's just the easiest and the clearest way to do, to manage an account like this. So basically, to summarize, we, there is a tax to this investment policy, a Georgia Code that dictates how this money can be invested, and we also put together a little glossary, and that just simply talks about the different investments, the U.S. Treasury Securities, agency bonds, and agency bonds issued by federal government agencies as part of, just to be attached to the investment policy statement. And that gives a little bit more of a clearer explanation of the type of investments that we think we can invest in. I'd be glad to answer any questions, or Larry, or Lois, anyone, is there anything, Rob, do we need to cover further?
I think that covered it.
Do y'all manage other monies similar to these foundations, or anything like that, that have to help, that can't afford to lose the asset?
We do. We do, and these are the type of investments that we would use in that particular case also.
Any questions, anybody?
You said, how long you're gonna meet in the beginning, as y'all get this thing rolling off? You gonna meet, you said monthly or quarterly?
Well, what we have put in the statement, and this is just in the investment policy statement, is that we would have, I would say, more of a formal meeting each quarter, however, as we make investments, we will email or fax those investments that day to the city manager and to your finance.
Larry, no one leaves, you got to do it.
Absolutely.
We actually have to, and they send the email or the fax to us, we look at them, review them, Lois and I, and we send the fax back to them, say, okay, but then there has to be a phone call that says, okay, per our review of the recommended investments, please proceed.
All the investments are directed by Larry and Lois, and then they put the transactions into place.
I certainly feel safe with Lois, but sure.
How you goin'?
Me too.
Chris, also, too, they will receive a monthly statement each month showing all of the investments. Also, as any specific investment is made, they will receive a confirmation explaining every bit of that, they will keep a copy of it, we'll keep a copy of it, I say.
Just like retirement.
Hello, is this your long-term contract right here for us?
It is.
I think there's actually a resolution that y'all can address.
It's something that I have. We got it, but it aren't down here, number three, I believe.
Okay.
Then I'll sign it.
Any other questions, or anyone, any questions?
Did a great job.
Thank you.
All right, we need an approval of the council agenda, please.
I make a motion to, go ahead. You enjoy it, June.
I make a motion that we approve the council agenda.
I'll second it, then.
I have a motion to second, further discussion. See you none, all in favor, please consider raising the right hand, saying aye. That's unanimous, Mr. Ron. Now, we have a time that we always enjoy, because it gives people that we work for a chance to come up and, well, if nobody wants to talk to us, but we do allow this time, and we do encourage anybody that wants to get up and speak to us, I believe you can find us, but there's no one here tonight, so I guess that means all is well. All right, I need an approval of the minutes, the minutes from the September the eighth regular council meeting and the September eighteenth, twenty fourteen council workshop slash call meeting.
I make a motion, September eighth regular council meeting and September eighteenth council workshop call.
Second, then.
I have a motion to second and further discussion. See you none, all in favor, please consider raising the right hand, saying aye. That's unanimous, Mr. Ron. Now, we're gonna move to our resolutions. Item number two is a resolution providing for a new alcohol beverage license for Main Street Beverage is located at thirteen ten South Main Street.
Yes, sir, as I mentioned to you all at the workshop, this is for Main Street Beverage located thirteen ten South Main, previously Big Gems. They are working with staff to rectify some issues that are at the buildings. I've been in touch with him as early as last week to make sure he is taking care of those things, and there will be no business license issued until all of those things are approved. So staff is recommending approval of this alcohol license. This gives them the opportunity to move forward to obtain it from the state.
Okay, I make a motion to accept item number two.
Second.
I have a motion to second and further discussion. See you none, all in favor, please consider raising the right hand, saying aye. That's unanimous. Now, we have the resolution providing for the investment policy of the SWCD fund and appointment of Alan Mooney and Barnes as investment advisors for the fund.
I make a motion for line thirty.
Second, then.
I have a motion to second and further discussion. See you none, all in favor, please consider raising the right hand, saying aye. If you know this, Mr. Ron, I'm gonna be signing it right now. I assume this is my copy to sign, or have you got an official copy?
I think we just, since this is expected, we can sign.
Okay. Let's see if it was better than this.
Thank you.
Thank you. In other business, consider action on alcohol beverage license for Santos Lounge. Mr. Attorney, how are we gonna go about that? Are we gonna, we already had the workshop, where they got to get up and give their discussion?
We had the, yeah, we had the hearing, council heard the evidence, and now it's just time for you all to make a decision, as what action, if anyone, regarding. I mean, you have, you could do nothing, you could assess a fine, you could revoke the license. You have, you know, several options available to you.
Well, given the testimony of the workshop, I make a motion to revoke the alcohol beverage license for Santos Lounge. Second, then, motion.
I got a motion to second and further discussion. Now, nobody sure I'm clear. Now, that's to revoke the license from here on out?
Yes.
There's no timeline?
Correct.
Is that what I'm hearing everybody wants to do?
That's, Mayor, to be clear, that is for the current licensee.
That's right, not for the property.
Not for the property, just for license.
All in favor, consider raising the right hand, saying aye. That's unanimous. Next item is to award, award a bid to Quillion House Construction Company Incorporated for renovation and expansion of the Leroy Rogers Senior Center, the amount of one million forty thousand two hundred dollars, and authorization from city manager to enter into that contract.
Yes, sir, on September the eleventh, sealed bids were opened for the CBDG project for the renovation and expansion of the senior center. There were three contractors who responded. Staff is recommending award of bid to Quillion House Construction for the project, and to authorize the city manager to enter into the contract for the project. As you know, this is a budgeted project, it's an additional forty-six hundred twenty-five square feet to the center. There are five hundred thousand in CBDG funds that are still available for this project in addition to the previous in addition to the, the previous CDBG project and these SPOSS funds that the City of Tifton received from the public. Robinson and Associates are grant administrators. The total award is a million forty thousand. It includes two alternatives for the project, and staff is recommending approval of this bid.
Mr. Ram, I make a motion that we approve the bid of Quillion House Construction Company for renovation and expansion of the senior center.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Let me just ask you a question. When I, when I look on this page back here and I see list of plant holders there, were those all the people bidding on it? What does that mean, list of plant holders, right here?
Those are people requesting copies of the plans.
I see, and the, the people actually bid on it, just these three here.
That's correct.
Okay.
Thanks. Rob, Larry, how does the Robinson Associates as the administrator, how does that work with the grant?
They have all of the administrative requirements that DCA requires for these funds. They've done numerous projects for the City of Tifton.
So they're a third party that Rona and you guys have been working with to make sure everything is documented correctly, proper usage of the monies?
That's correct. There's, there's two different facets to this. You have CDBG grant, then you have SPOSS funds that have been utilized to make, do the construction of the project.
Okay.
They were, they were the group that actually applied for the grant for us and put it together for us, and it was, they were approved by council sometime back to be our administrators.
Good deal. Larry, why don't we bid on this one then?
Okay. Nobody, unreliable.
All right. That's all I have.
I have a motion to second on the floor, do there's any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please, if I raise your right hand, saying aye. That's unanimous. Item number six is to the approval of contract with Tucker Brothers Construction for construction of the shoe block fire station and authorization for the city manager to enter into the contract.
This, Mary, you were called several weeks ago. We brought forward counsel the results of the bids, and I authorized this to negotiate contract with Tucker Brothers because all of them actually frankly over budget. Chief Coleman and his staff have met with Tucker Brothers on numerous occasions to get this, the scope of the project to the point that if that's will be within budget, including this, the well-insetment system that was not in the original bid, that the cost of that is in budget because we have to have it for the operation of that, the fire station. There's two hundred sixty thousand, it is within budget, and it will meet the requirements of a volunteer fire department for shoe.
Okay, I, I see, it's quoted valid for thirty days, but I don't see a, a date up here. We're gonna, we're within that thirty day period, we're good, okay. All right. I accept a motion.
I make a motion to contract with Tucker Brothers Construction for construction of the shoe block fire station and authorize for the city manager to enter in contract.
Second.
I got a motion to second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please, if I raise my right hand, saying aye. That's unanimous. All right, guys, item seven, which is considered change of time and place for the November third, twenty fourteen, regular council meeting. And I will, if I can, I'll try to know Julie, because I believe she's done the research for that. Wes, Rona, did you want?
No, sir.
Okay.
I'd be glad to, I mean, or Larry or Rona would like to address, but anyway. My proposal is to have us move the November third council meeting to Tiff Hall at AVAC. That facility is absolutely beautiful. Rona and Chris Beckham and I have met with Pam Leonard and with Dr. Bridges, and they have opened those doors and been so gracious and are really excited about the potential of us being there to have our meeting. The, the staff and faculty at AVAC are there on campus until five-thirty. Their proposal, and I think it's a fair proposal, is if we move the meeting time to six P.M. versus starting at five, there'll be plenty of parking there at the front circle of AVAC and won't interfere with any staff or faculty parking. So, my request would be that we change the location from this location in the municipal court building to Tiff Hall and set the meeting schedule for six, starting at six rather than at five. There will be a brief tour of Tiff Hall. Mike Jason is going to be there to show us some of the things that they've done with the display, the history of the building and the Tiff family and the community and that type thing. That'll take about fifteen minutes, and then we can start our meeting and conduct our business. So, they, they will handle everything, so that's my proposal.
And that sounds like a good proposal, and Jessica, we'll, we need to change this up on the counter for everybody. We're gonna move to see.
Do you need a motion on that?
We do, well, I guess we do, yeah, let me have a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to change the place and time to AVAC, Tiff Hall, six P.M. when we first remember.
Second.
I have a motion to second and further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, please, if I raise your right hand, saying aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Julie. Great ideas. Because what would we be without AVAC? They, they really have a lot of influx of funds that come back to us, they eat here, they buy gas here. Thank God for AVAC. I remember I did a discussion of downtown parking warrants. Who was, I'll start there. Okay.
Thought we were finished with this, but go ahead.
Well, I did too, but apparently aren't. Apparently, there are some merchants, property owners, tenants in the downtown area that are having some unintended consequences of, of the parking warrants we put in place, i.e. they've had tenants threaten them about the security of their, the registered tenants downtown at night, and having to park away from the building.
And these are primary residential tenants?
Yes.
I'd like to point that out, not commercial tenants.
We have met on this numerous times, of which you've got, we've been working on this for about two years before we were able to get something actually to council. We had, I, I can't tell you the number of meetings we've had on this parking warrants for downtown. The problem is that if you make one tenant or one property owner happy, or one party happy, that means that, then you, then another party's not happy because there's just, we haven't been able to resolve the conflict between tenants and the residential tenants, the commercial tenants, and the property owners. I don't know the answer to this one because we met with Julie and Porter Jackson, yeah, and Chief Doughty, we had a kind of a side meeting with Lucretia about parking warrants, and you recall, John Flataker came to a meeting, David Davis has been to a meeting. I, I don't know the answer. I hate to tell you that, I just don't know the answer to this one.
I believe this is a unique situation, maybe not on the overnight people, and I thought we could kind of fix that. But this is a business that has eight, eight people that work there, I think their state, they do something, and they actually work there. Is that, is that one of the...
That's, that's one of them.
One of them.
There are more than one.
Okay, but that's one of them.
That's one of them.
And, and they're located right there where they're real close to Kato and I parking lot. But it's like everybody else, we want to park at the front door and go in. But, you know, can we fit a round peg in a square hole? Maybe. What, what can we do that doesn't upset, and I'm just talking, then all y'all can chime right in here. I, I don't want to disturb the two years of work and all the people coming in, everybody buying into it, and then we realize something's wrong. But by the same token, we realize that something's wrong, I'd like to try to fix it, if there's a way to fix it. I'm like you, or I, I don't know how to fix it without breaking it first, and then go back, go back to square one. These are eight people, is that right? Eight, eight people that would need to park up?
I, I've not talked to the, the business itself, but I have spoken with property owner.
And I have...
As a matter of fact, I've spoken to several property owners downtown.
Yeah.
And so far, no one has been able to come up with a solution that will make everybody happy.
You know, just, and I should have asked this to the property owner, and I didn't, I should have done that before tonight, I should have called him back. I wonder if there's certain times that they leave, I mean, they're not, they're not there the whole day. And I'm only talking just in one section, I'm talking about the people that stay overnight at the lodging apartments. But if there's some kind of time relegation, I don't, I don't think we're gonna be able to fix it tonight, but we need to go into workshop and we need to decide what, I mean, we really need to study this, and, and I think I need to put this into a, a subcommittee if I can. Do we have time to do that?
Sure. I mean, time's of the essence, but the quicker we can get something established to resolve this issue, the better off we're gonna be.
All right, well, I, um, let's, let's put, because, well, that's your district.
Yeah.
And Julie's on top of it, and is any, do you mind if I put you on Julie?
Yeah.
She's already done some work.
Yeah, she's done lots of legwork on it.
She has, and she's, she's looked at it, and, and, uh... Because y'all have districts out there close, let's get somebody that's not right there in that district, is that okay? Mr. Vice Mayor, and you stay so busy till I just need to point somebody else, is that okay? Now, if you insist, I'll point you and Julie.
Well, as, as long as Julie's, I don't have to be there as long as Julie.
That's the way I look at it. I, I agree with that.
She's done so much to, so now, so I, you know, I would, I would just, I would love to see just, just, just do that though.
I, I, I agree with you. Now, Wes, I'm not pointing you down, I'm not throwing you out, but the, the two people I've got in mind have done a super job on the tourism committee. It's nothing against any of the rest of us, but they, they jumped in there and they've been a hold of this thing, and I'd just love to see Julie and Chris on that, if that suits everybody.
Sure.
Yeah, that's great.
Julie and I work well again.
Yes, we do.
We've, we've had some success stories.
We can handle it.
Maybe this will be a success story.
Let me say this too, the, the building owner, when he talked to me, I think there's a time issue here.
There is.
We need to, we need to really get on this and probably need to have all of our documentation ready before the next workshop, if we can. And then we need to either have a special, can we have a special vote at the workshop? Or you may wait till other meeting.
You have a call meeting, man, at the workshop, if you want to take some action.
And it, it would just be great to see this thing worked out so that we don't break it, but we, we mold it a little bit.
One thing I'd like to add, if it's okay, a parking problem in downtown is a great problem to have. There are many downtowns who wish they had a parking problem, and thankfully, we have all the resources in place to have good viable businesses. The, the residents that live downtown, we, interestingly enough, in the meeting that Larry referenced, we asked Lucretia to contact several of our sort of sister cities that were similar in size and similar downtowns to see what they had, and, and Chris, I'll share all that information with you, but the, the neat aspect of our downtown is that we do have a large residential population, and some of the downtowns don't, and that's a key component of a strong downtown, is people living there. Those are the people who are going to walk to the restaurants and walk to the drugstore and walk to the theater for events and things like that. So, I, I do feel that with some tweaking and some, like you said, molding, I think we can come up with something that will be fair. And Davy Davis made a, I thought, a, a good comment the other night when he was at our last meeting. You know, sometimes things do look really good on paper, and then once you implement them, you begin to realize, well, maybe that's not working exactly like we'd like. So, trying to be as fair and as equal to all parties that are involved in downtown, property owners, tenants, residential tenants, commercial tenants, those who are coming to city hall to conduct business, you know, we'll be back down there ourselves before long, and so, we will be abiding by these ordinances too. So, we just need to make sure that it's fair as possible for all, and, and I appreciate you putting this in subcommittee, and Chris, I'll share with you in the next few days everything, we'll get all this ASAP.
What we talk, maybe in the morning?
Yeah.
Get things planned together.
Yeah, that'll work.
Sounds like we got a plan.
You do.
All right. Wonder what would Superman?
I don't know about that.
All right. That was documented, boy. And Lucretia, we're gonna need probably some of your input too, if you'll be able to do this subcommittee, please.
Definitely.
You always add so much, and we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Let's see, I don't have to have a, a vote to do the subcommittee, and we don't have to vote on this. One more question, because I own property downtown, is this gonna be one of those things that will come down to vote, I'm not gonna be able to vote on? Just look at that and let me know when we vote.
Now, you won't have a conflict.
I didn't think so.
Oh, let me, let me ask you two, excuse me, we manage property, my company manages property in downtown, is that going to be an issue?
Uh, it, no.
Okay.
I mean, basically, you're, you know, what you're deciding deals with the overall downtown area, not one specific property, so, that would be your problem.
Right. We're gonna move on to item number ten. Did I say ten?
You did.
You know what, I drew a line across the top one, and it had a warning for it like that, I should have said nineteen. Item number nine is consider appointment of the Historic Preservation Commission, and I believe if you look back on your tab number nine...
We don't have tabs.
Yeah.
Oh, that's my fault.
We're using modern technology.
But we're on page sixty-two, then.
Yes.
Okay, okay, well, we have Mr. Mark Pederman.
And Brett could not stay.
Brett Henderson.
Right, right, and then that was, this would be replacement of Brett Henderson, whom I also called and phoned and begged to stay, and he was really good, and they just didn't have the time, you know, you had to send him off to school, all this kind of stuff, and he's real busy, so, sorry about that. Okay, do I have a motion?
Okay, I make a motion to accept Mark Pederman on the Historic Preservation Commission.
Second.
I have a motion, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please, if I raise your right hand, saying aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, and, uh, look forward to getting, getting that feeling on here. Gosh, y'all actually, we're... And is this a, is this a group of, maybe a school or a class?
This is a...
Tell the officer thank you about trying to rescue my grandson, David Pippin, rescue Wes from here.
First, let us, let us tell you how sorry we are. Grandson didn't, we did that at the birth of the meat, we gave him two different awards. The chief gave him a, a special pen that we put on him, and as, as the chief said, he said, "You know, you do those things without thinking because you love people." They have eighteen pounds of gear that they, that they wear on them, and to jump in a pool is, is a very brave thing, and we're so sorry, so sorry for the outcome. But glad to see y'all here, so, so glad that y'all came, show your support, yes.
Yeah, stay, I can get back down if you need it.
Right.
Yeah, stay, I can get back down.
I, I wish you would, because these people came with special to, to, to thank you before this time.
Stew some man, they'll be back.
And you've got a good-looking family, I tell you. I think I've seen a couple of y'all in school. Mayor come talk to your school? You're good luck. Y'all, let me just tell you, for the guys that are down here, I would, I was challenged to read a whole chapter through an entire school, and that was, it must have been a thousand short. And I asked, this took me forty-five minutes to read, and I, I briefed over forty for time during the weekend. It almost put me to sleep. And my granddaughter's in that, in that school, and, and she happened to be sick that day, which, she told me she was sorry about that, but she said, "Big Papa, I talked to some people," they said, "They almost went to sleep while you were reading." But y'all, I wasn't, that was a long first chapter, like sixteen pages. So, if any of you were to that, I apologize. But they're coming on down.
Yeah.
They'll be down in just a minute, and, uh, this, this is very touching, very touching. You know, how old was the child?
Twenty.
Twenty.
Twenty over twenty. Twenty, he'll be twenty-one next month.
Oh, twenty-one?
He'll be twenty-one next month.
Twenty-one next month, oh my goodness, oh my goodness. Uh, did he have a lawyer?
Yes, sir.
We're all gonna get to see him, you know. We're gonna miss him, but we're gonna get to see him again. So, uh, let me... Julie, the two officers over there, man? It was, uh...
Laska, Florida.
Steve Laska and Joyce Clark.
Joyce Clark, yeah.
And I, I'm on it.
They're actually work, they're actually working tonight, and they fixed, that, you heard in chairs, fair? That was her shift leaving at the...
That, that was them, that's it.
That'd be your...
They're speeding down here.
They start their work on that right there.
We're gonna, we're gonna hold meeting on just a little bit longer, and, uh, because we're, we're fluid about everything. I'm gonna do something a little bit different. Uh, if the city council wouldn't mind coming down and joining with me with these officers. I was a little fella right there.
Two, four?
Two years old. I can't even remember what I was doing. Some people say I, I gotta do something. I gotta smile. We're gonna find the right one for me, Jack. I hadn't, I hadn't... Steve, you and Joyce come down, please. We had some folks that, uh, that were sorry that they missed the awards while ago. We've got Miss Officer Joyce Clark, Officer Steve Laska, if y'all would come on down here, please. Y'all can just stand out here at the council, please. And, uh, these five people came, this is, this is the young man's grandfather, and all these are relatives. And, uh, they came to show their appreciation for what y'all did. I told them, the chief said earlier, about eighteen pounds of weight, but it didn't matter, y'all fifty anyway. And we're sorry for the outcome, but we are proud of, of, of the brave thing that they did, that they did. And, uh, we were so glad that y'all were still in the building so that, so that they could, uh, they could look at you and tell you.
You guys coming means more than any award, we don't deserve any awards, we don't. But you guys showing up, that means everything.
Well said. Let's just give them a hand, I want that. Ma'am, you coming to hit me or what? Are you coming to hug? You're a asshole, aren't you? Isn't that true? What's your name?
Steve, y'all, y'all kind of turn around there, let the officer get a photograph of you.
God bless each and every one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are adjourned. Uh, wait, Larry, we've got some old people out there, I've got names on them.